There you go.
You're good.
I think you got it. We just gotta be careful we don't get too rampant with this stuff.
Voila.
Very good.
Yeah, I can watch the whole thing.
Hey, we can. You give us the high sign Katie when you're ready to go.
Oh, you're good.
We're good to go?
You're good.
Okay, folks, in fair disclosure, this is being taped but we're not live, okay? We, and it'll be on the website, I don't know, tomorrow, I'll just say tomorrow. I don't think it'll be there tonight. So, just be mindful that, whatever, okay? I'm not sure about, I'm not, I'm not sure about mics here either. Is your mic live?
I don't know.
Well, we don't know. Katie will figure that one out.
We're plugged in.
Okay, we're gonna have, we'll, we'll open your hearing. We'll run it for five or six minutes, there's nobody here, okay? Cause we've got another hearing at, at quarter off. When we get done, we'll have the regular meeting at seven o'clock. We can't take any action until then. Maybe depending on what transpires, we got a minute, the board wants to talk to you about some stuff. We can get some things out of the way. And then when the regular meeting starts, you know, you're the, you're gonna be the first ones on the docket. So, after this hearing, you can just go off in the corner there and, and wait maybe. Or if there's no one else other than the proponents here for the next hearing, stay where you are. You can hang around, you don't have to go back out and come back.
She'll be back, we got her phone.
Alright, uh, will the secretary read the notice for the first hearing, please?
A public hearing will be held by the Town of Sullivan Planning Board on October 6th, 2020, at 6:30 PM at the Town of Sullivan, 7507 Lake Portau, New York. To consider the application of James and Shay Foster, the property located at 1292 Route 5 West, New York, SCL being 48-7-111. For the Blue Train Training and Socialization Boarding and Training Facility. The above application is open to inspection at the Town Office Building, 7507 Lake Portau, New York. During regular business hours, persons wishing to appear in such here may be subject to other representatives.
You, you can, you're more than welcome to say something in your behalf or pass and say nothing at all. It, it doesn't make much difference for you the other, but that's, that's your call. Okay, otherwise, we'll, we'll sit here for a few minutes, end this, and we'll move on to the next hearing.
I think, I think we said pretty much everything in the last meeting.
Basically, basically what we're looking at, just refresh our memory. We're, we're, we're looking at an expansion of, of the fence around the outside at per diagram. It's on there now. And we're looking at a few more dogs.
Correct.
And we're going, what are the numbers again?
Uh, 20 overnight.
So, 20 overnight, right, okay.
Well, up to 20.
Up to 20, right. We're giving you a max and hopefully you're comfortable with, you know, whatever's up, up to that.
Did you have a limit on the daycare dogs also?
Uh, I do not believe so.
I don't, I don't think so. Well, doesn't matter.
I don't believe so.
It was 10 dogs, so on the weekends and overnight, right?
Yeah, it was.
That's the one now, now you wanna add 10 more.
Yeah. Yeah, for overnight, but for daycare, that's just during the day. I didn't, I don't know if there was a limit on that.
I honestly, let me, let me take a look here, I honestly don't think so.
So, how many is your count for the day?
It, it varies.
Right, yeah, at, um, what we have now, we have 60 to 80 dogs a day in Syracuse, but that's double the space.
Right.
So, here, it would probably be like anywhere from like 30 to 45, I would say. Split into three different groups.
Now, if they're there during the day.
People do half days, some people do full days. Some people, yeah, they, they'll do like, if drop offs are like seven, then they'll do a half a day until like 10 or 11. Or some people drop off on their way to work at say eight o'clock and they pick back up at four o'clock when they get out of work. That's a full day.
Now, are these dogs, are these dogs, are they there as, how do I use the right word? Are, are you kinda sitting those dogs in that time? Are you training the dogs, all the above?
So, it's like a, a play and train, so they're, they're just socialized, it's structured socialization. So, they get to play with each other in a structured setting, which just means a dog trainer's in the room with them.
So, there is training going on during, during this time too?
So, there's dogs that are specifically there for training?
Yep.
Okay, so you got a combination of what's, of what's going on?
Yep.
Alright, let's, let's think about, let's talk about that board. And those, these folks, are you comfortable with, are you comfortable with, let's say, a number during the day? Forty-five, 50 dogs, 45 dogs?
I think we should have some kind of not to exceed at any point number.
Can I ask a reason for that?
Um, so it's, so it's somewhat controlled, there isn't any issues with, with some of the neighbors? If we got 150 dogs, I mean, where's the limit?
Right.
You just said 100, I heard you saying, man, that's right.
No.
Me?
Eighty to 100?
Yeah, in Syracuse, but we have.
But it's also, the facility's also two, two and a half, two and a half times the facility here.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, I understand.
What's your ratio of, of people to dogs, you know, your, your staff to dogs?
Uh, like 20, 20 to 1.
20 to 1?
Mm-hmm.
See, I mean, cause then, I, you know, to carry this point, if you are short a person or two per day, you know, is that, one person gonna be able to pick up the slack? You know, are you gonna be finding yourself one person with 40 dogs or something? Well, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, things happen, so.
Kind, kind of above the operational, I think it's a John's to John's point there. That if, you know, you're not gonna feasibly, you're not gonna be able to handle or whatever, probably 100 dogs or 50 dogs.
So.
But if someone, if there was a concern, we could say, we, the town could say, in their permit, they, they, you know, they're, they're in the neighborhood of, they could have in the neighborhood of whatever it is, 50 or 60 dogs. That would be comfortable for you. Is somebody gonna go up there on a daily basis and count your dogs? No. Is somebody ever gonna go up there and count your dogs? No, probably not. But at least gives you a parameter there. So many at night, okay?
Yep.
The 20, okay? And you could have, you could have whatever it is. We're, we're not sitting here saying a specific number.
Yeah, we're not telling you a number you can't live with, we wanna make sure there's a number you're comfortable. And then we just get it on the record.
And when you feel the building would hold, the facility would hold comfortably, you know?
You know, then if you, then if, let's say, let's say, whatever, you wanna expand all this, well, then now, now we'll listen, renegotiate the numbers and the, you know, you wanna get a bigger building, you wanna add, I don't know, whether that's even feasible or, or whatever in, in your business. We don't wanna get into your business, you know?
Yeah.
We, we just, we just have the, the outside, the periphery and the, you know, it's kinda the parameters of how you're op, of what you're gonna operate on.
Okay.
Okay? Alright, is, uh, do you wanna say anything about, that you want on the record or anything like that for a hearing?
I could say up to, I mean, I don't think it, up to 50.
Okay.
Cause, and then in three different sections, so, I mean, there would be three trainers there at all times when there, if there was that many dogs there, but I don't, I don't know if that'll happen.
Okay, but I mean, folks, you know, it isn't, we're giving you the opportunity, you don't, you don't have to constrain yourself, you know, with it, with it.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, folks, let's have a motion to close this hearing.
I'm sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing's closed, okay. I don't know where Jerry went, but we've got one more hearing. Any issues?
They're saying that this is gonna be 80 feet long and the telephone pole is here. You look at them, this is about where the pole is here. Doesn't look like you're gonna have that much room.
Tell us what's around the DMO.
Where's the telephone pole?
This is right here.
It's in this file.
It drives up scale.
Right on the corner?
See, right, right here is the pole.
That's not the.
Yeah.
And they're saying 80 feet, this is the entrance area.
Yeah.
Is this gonna be?
That's a right. Do we do have a?
Could it come over here or could it be in the right of way?
Yes.
Is this a driveway or is this a street?
Yeah, it's a driveway.
Gentlemen, here's.
That's part of.
Well, I mean, it's just, you know, something myself.
Show that to them, that they wanna jam out.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry Frank, I just found it in the bag of my phone, thank you. So, they returned it.
I got packs, I got a couple of them.
Yeah. Yeah, it's fine.
We're right.
There's nobody here for that. Forrest is here and the couple you talked about.
Okay.
There's nobody here for, uh.
No, yep, bring him in.
Forrest is here.
These folks, these folks will take a backseat there.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, go ahead. Wherever you're comfortable, you can go to the sides, you can go out, you can go out in the hallway if you'd rather.
To me, to me, it looks like they're maintaining the same entry area here. So, this is not gonna come over here, so it's, you can't, I mean, 80 feet, it seems like it's gonna be.
Probably don't have proper scale.
Right, right.
It's very tough to judge this.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like it's about 30 feet and the fence is about 10 or 8.
And this, this pole is way back here and it looks like it's possibly over there.
Like we're here to scale.
Yeah.
He doesn't have a scale, I mean.
Right.
No, he just drew a set.
Right.
So, that's 80, how far, what's this, 24, so that, that would make it 16, right?
Right, right.
What is this?
This is.
This is the way to the building.
This is, oh, he's saying it's what, 34?
I'm trying to figure out what the, how much this, with this and there, if you take that and that, 24, what's the building width?
He's saying, what's this here?
No, no dimension.
No dimension? Well, this is 16 by 50, so you say that's 16 and what's he got here, 6, so he's saying 22 feet?
No way, right, according to what you saw.
Well, I mean, that.
No, this right here, this is 16 by 50, that's gotta be, this is 16, right?
Right.
That's 16, this is, this is.
And he's saying 62, there's 62. That it looks like on the, that's more than 22.
Does he have a dimension here?
No.
No, no.
No, 36, he does.
36 this way.
Right, so, I mean, it does, to me, it just doesn't seem like, it seems like they're gonna wade into that.
Yeah, it seems like there's something wrong.
Even if it's a driveway, you can't, you can't be right up on the edge of it.
No, he's, no.
I had a, I had a thousand dollars, so.
He wouldn't do that, I mean, that wouldn't be.
I should be writing the service, I should write a service like.
At David.
For a hundred bucks.
Oh, I think, um, the sheriff was at my table.
We're gonna have to look at every, no, we're gonna, no, we're, we're, we're gonna have to look at everything. Because I had one, I had a call to, yes, yesterday. Can we get, can we get a?
I think she's a little nervous.
For today?
Yeah. You got an app, of course, and I always met you, but the point was, we wouldn't have. You have an app, you know?
I had times.
You get all that stuff, you have to see them on.
I'd pay more than I did. I did my lap, I got my, I got my.
Should we have a point to say, you know, we need a map?
Oh, yeah.
No more 70.
You do.
That's my point.
You do, you do do it, but you're trying to do it, some of these things are so limited, you know, anyway.
You do.
We all start.
Frank, oh, yeah, we did seek her at the last meeting, but we're all good, we're good.
We're good, we're good, okay. Secretary, read the notice, please, for the second hearing.
A public hearing will be held by the Town of Sullivan Planning Board pursuant to section 276 of the Town Law. On the application of the rest of the boys, for approval submitted in the 23, 431, and so, the application is 32. The application is 75 by 25 dollars. Lot number 2 is 32, 19 acres. Lot number 3 is 521 acres, lot number 4 is 1021 acres, lot number 5 is 215 acres. The hearing will be held on October 6th, 2020, the Town Office Building, 7507 Lake Portau, New York.
Good enough.
At 6:45 PM, average.
Eight thirty one today.
A copy of that, that subdivision is 544, and I'm a public inspection party of the public hearing. This is my meeting, so I would have to tell them I would have been.
Okay, folks, in, uh, interest of fair disclosure, this, this meeting is being taped and, but it's not live. And it will be on the website probably in 24 hours or so, okay? But right now, it's not live streamed. To our disappointment, we wanted, you know, we like, we like the prime, we like prime time. Okay, Forrest, do you want to just, why don't you just remark that you did change, you did change one boundary line there? Just so the folks understand.
We did change that strip, so there was a one foot strip, not 15 foot.
We can look at that.
I think, I think we've gone through everything else, I don't think we got any other, we got any other issues.
What lot does it differ?
Lot number 5.
Now, these can be commercial too now, can't they, right?
No.
Uh, yeah, where's Lafayette? This business on that side, isn't it?
This on the south side.
I, this is on our side.
South side.
The south side.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, I think both sides the road to Lafayette. Where are we with relation to Lafayette?
We're.
You're way down from Lafayette.
No, this is, this is in Lake Forest.
You're way down.
Too much farther, yeah.
You're across from.
Terry Bush knows, Terry Bush knows the property.
No, this is just, uh, this would be MR 12, this would be MR 12 actually. Actually. Pardon, thank you pardon?
I think it's all business. No, it's both.
No. Jerry's saying that we're, we're beyond the business zone, I think, right?
Agriculture and business.
Okay, agricultural business. Okay, and where are?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're west of Lafayette.
Oh, I thought she was saying we were east of Lafayette.
No, we're way west of Lafayette.
East.
Okay?
West. You're back.
Folks, uh, you may, you may speak at this hearing amongst all the din here going on, if you wish to, you don't have to.
Yeah, I believe it's before you get to the fire burn, on the south side of 30.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it would be west of Lafayette.
Yep, that makes sense. I'm sorry? But they still, just because you're subdivided, if somebody, they'd have, they, they could buy, buy a parcel, but they'd have to come in. They'd have to come in and go through.
Right, but I'm just saying that we're still on the business.
Right.
Right, right, right.
I didn't thought that was Kansas River Creek.
Yeah, Kansas River Creek is up here.
No, well, I'll find out.
Okay, in the interest of time here, I don't think we're gonna hear anything more about this one. Uh, can we have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, what we're gonna do is open the regular meeting. At the regular meeting, the, the first order of business is gonna be these folks back here, cause they had a hearing just a few minutes ago. And we'll deal with them, and you can stay here, but you may have to shuffle your way out of the way of these folks until that, till that happens. But you certainly can stay. Here's number two on the, on the agenda, then we'll, then we'll, we'll deal with this one, and then we'll get on with the rest of the agenda. But at that time, we're gonna kick you out, okay?
Okay.
Alright. Uh, the regular meeting for the Town of Sullivan Planning Board for the month of October 2020 will commence. The minutes for, they got several minutes. You get, uh, the minutes for the first of September, and then you have minutes for the special meeting, uh, with Mr. Taylor on the 8th. You both should, you should have copies of both at this point, well, let's segment them. Let's do the regular meeting. Do we have any, do we have any additions or corrections to that?
No.
Can we entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make no.
Is that motion seconded?
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the, the minutes for the special meeting on the 8th have been circulated. Is, uh, entertain a motion to approve?
Go make a motion.
Gotta be somebody that was there. I'm looking at you, okay. Alright, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Uh, on the agenda this evening, we have the, we have the two hearings. Then we have, uh, Mr. McDonald, under old, this is all old business, with the Power Sports down on Route 31 in Bridgeport. And Mr. Hathaway, uh, who wishes to amend his, uh, his previously approved site plan for a larger building. Now, under new business, uh, those of us that went to, uh, did a site visit, uh, to Mr. Taylor to look at the lights, okay? Then we can bring that up and have a discussion, take action, and remember, and as John would say, memorialize it in the minutes, okay? Whatever action you wish to take on that. Other than that, that's what I have. Do I just gotta have anything else at this point? Okay, uh, the Fosters. Come on up, or get up closer anyway. Okay. John, do you want to, do you have your, do you wanna go through any, any notes or conditions that we had talked about before on this one?
Let's see what I had. Well, I can talk about the conditions that we had from the, from the last one we had done, so we can go through all.
But basically, all we're doing is we're revising those.
So, I got out here a little late for the public hearing, but the hours of operation for this, the, the, the new amended business was before, I said it last month, it was 7 AM to 6:30, 6:30 PM, Monday through Friday, is that correct?
Answer is yes.
Okay, Friday, 7 AM, 6:30 PM. Saturday, they have training classes, 9 AM to 2 PM. Training, 9 AM, 2 PM. Overnight boarding will occur, would occur seven days per week by appointment and all weekend services by appointment.
Yep.
In that statement would be a maximum of 20 dogs.
Correct.
And I have, you, yep, boarding would not exceed 20 dogs at any given time for overnight, 20 dogs max. Seven days a week. All the, the allowed uses would include boarding, training, and doggy daycare.
With, with during, during a day, during the day of a maximum of 50. Right?
Yeah.
Doggy care during business hours.
Would that 50 include the 20 that may be staying overnight after multiple nights?
Well, no, that would be during, that's a, that's a night, that, they can have 20 or not. They can have 20 overnight, they can have 50 during the day.
So, daytime not to exceed 50 total, and nighttime not to exceed 20 total.
That's correct.
Okay.
I believe that's right, we in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay?
Let's see, 24 hour staffing for the facility, they agreed to that last month. Alright.
Obviously 24 hour staffing when there's overnight dogs. We have no overnight dogs.
Nobody's there, we're not gonna check on that, right? Let's see. Fencing, they proposed, uh, where, where are we at with the fencing?
I would refer to, I would refer to submitted site plan, right here.
What's the height, does it say? Is it 6 feet?
Thank you pardon?
What's the height of that fence?
Eight, what is that?
Was it eight?
What do you got?
Is it eight?
There's, I think the existing fence that's there now, we're just gonna copycat that, is 6.
Okay, 6 foot fence and it's, uh.
What, what kind of construction?
Privacy.
Is that opaque? Slats are together?
Pardon, yeah.
And my notes were that it was a white opaque fence from last month, is that what you landed on?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, 6 foot white opaque fence per the plan. Submitted plan, or else I'll end up doing a written one here.
Okay.
Too many things.
Do you wanna go along the side though with chain link, you said before?
Right, so the, the, can I get, can I get?
Chain link?
It has a chain link.
You're right, it's a chain link here.
So, this is a privacy fence that is existing right now. So, the people that are in there wanna take their fence with them. So, what we wanna do is just basically move this part to just outside this overhead door. Come back down the same, same length, same length across the front until you get to the end here. I, I heard you talking about a telephone pole.
Right.
The telephone pole is back here on a corner back in there. We wouldn't, we're only going out just past this building enough to maybe, probably go right directly into the telephone pole. So, I think it's, uh, not quite sure if you measured off that.
No.
You had on there 80 feet and.
That's the length, that's.
It's not 80 feet of the building. No, no, the 80 feet was the length of the, of the fence itself. So, you're, you're saying that this, this door here is gonna be maybe another 12 feet or something like this? And here it comes to maybe here, and then how far does this come here? Cause according to your sketch, you're saying it come right to the edge of the pole. That's not 80 feet from here to there. Yeah, so it's coming to about, just off the building about like right here. And then right, I mean, just on the other side of the blue line, and then all the way up through and then back in.
I'll just make a notation here. What, how far off, how far off the end of the building? Parallel to the building, roughly?
I'm guessing maybe, maybe 8 feet.
Okay, good.
Can we say 8 to 10 just?
Sure.
I mean, it's not, this, this is his access to his house.
Right.
His driveway, so we don't wanna.
I, yeah, I couldn't see him blocking that off.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you didn't want him rolling stone in it.
Yeah, we don't wanna. So, the privacy fence, what, what we do is the privacy fence would be all in front of the building, down to here. And then on this corner right here, change it from, from here to the back to chain link. And that would also be a, that would be a vinyl chain link, but not just a ugly, it'd all be brand new construction.
That sounds good.
Is any of that actually, does any of that description specifically on our drawing and map here?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm adding a little.
Are you labeling it?
I'm, I'm add, I'm adding this to it.
Alright, and you'll initial it in data frame?
Yes, I will, yeah.
That's great.
That's gonna be more like 60, 70 feet instead of 80 feet, wouldn't you guess?
I imagine, you, Carmen did the, did the site.
Carmen did that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought, yeah.
So, you have to take that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, and you know, 80 feet would bring you basically to that driveway area and that's not gonna fly.
Yeah, no, we're not coming out here, that's, no, we're basically coming out just, just enough on the other side, uh, of this blue line, basically.
Okay.
I think those are.
Yep, and any lighting or anything else, it's whatever's there now, or you're doing something different?
No, existing.
Existing lighting? Signage? Signage?
Uh, existing signage, just with our sign and our logos.
Okay. That, you're talking, isn't there a, is there a monument sign out by the road?
Yes.
That's the one you're talking about?
Yeah, and then there's one at the top of the building too.
One at the top of the building that
Okay.
You can see him right, right up there to the left.
Okay.
So they're just gonna change the logo or messaging inside this, inside the sign itself will be there.
Same size.
Yeah, same size, they're just gonna change the message.
All right, so I I didn't have anything up, but I did wanna, the the waste, the waste manager would be the same as it was before, but they said that they would, there'd be a pickup of at least once a week waste, so waste, dog waste would be picked up a minimum of once a week. They could do it more if they wanna. For a week minimum. Minimum, and then from the last approval, I don't know, most of these things are already been captured in here. With that lighting, we had said before it would be shielded so as not to spill onto neighboring property.
He just said same light, same existing light.
All right, is that, I don't know if it's shielded now, it should be, because that's what we
I I don't think they have a problem with that.
So we did the fence, we parking is gonna be the same, they've already got the road cut approval from the DOT. Signage is good.
GML.
That's all I have, yeah, GML came back, returned for local determination, the seeker, we had needed, no.
Do we need to do the seeker?
So before, when you get a vote, we're gonna go through the seeker to package it into one big.
Okay, well, we need, then we need to do that.
All right, so well, those would be the conditions of any of, of any approval that we just went over, and I would capture those on a full blown resolution. So let, if it's if it's okay with Frank, I'll go over the the questions on the seeker form. So this is an unlisted action, you're the lead agency, there are no other involved agencies. The questions are as follows, will the proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use plan or zoning regulation?
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of the land?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of an existing community, of the existing community?
No.
Uh, no critical environment, okay, uh, will it result in an adverse change to existing levels of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit by in here or walkways?
No.
Will the proposed action uh result in an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies?
No.
Public or private wastewater facilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resource?
No.
Will the proposed action result in adverse change in natural resources?
No.
Will the proposed action uh result in increased uh or potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental health or or environmental resources or human health? All right, I will in anticipation of your motion, I'll check the box for a negative declaration and we're gonna, today's a six right here.
Okay. Just unless you want John to read them back, will somebody make the motion that includes all the conditions that John, we just, we just went through?
No, second.
Is there any discussion concerning any of those? All those in favor?
Aye.
You're in business. Okay, you'll get a notice, you'll get a notice of action. What you just did really is Karma's property, it stays, it's with Karma, that's that's how that works, okay? Okay, you're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Look forward to taking care of all your dogs.
You don't want our dog.
You don't want ours.
Okay, folks, uh, Forrest, where'd Forrest go? There. Okay. Okay, we did the seeker for you, there's no GML.
That's for the, the one we just did.
Okay, um.
Sorry, I screwed everything up. Is it still on?
Okay, um, board, you've seen, you've seen the map as submitted, I think we discussed that, Forrest indicated the change that he has made on that. So, uh, do we have uh any other questions of Forrest? Or, in this case? We good?
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second please.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
You're in business. Give us maps. You got everything, Mylar and everything? Pardon? Sure.
Let's do it, we'll get them out.
You want peace bill?
Take Yeah, he's got all these. We'll keep one. Actually, Forrest.
Someone has to uh come in.
Owner has to sign.
Something is. That will be here. There's nothing on the map, I've heard it's something.
Owner, do you do a submission for the owner of the, of the property, so yeah, but this year he signed an application, aren't they, right?
Yes.
He'll be already.
Yep.
She should uh, she should really have a uh, a a fee on that one. She lives there fifty bucks a lot.
Forgot about the fee.
Two fifty? We hold the maps hostage. Okay, we're good. Thank you very much, folks.
What's next, Phil?
I'm sorry. Uh, should be Chris McDowell. If he's here. Is he out there? Forrest, seeker?
He's here, he wants to do the Frank, you said we have a fifth application tonight, fifth matter we're taking care of besides these four.
Uh, no, the only, the only thing, the only thing that's not on your agenda right now is uh, is the wild slights.
And are we doing something with it tonight?
Well, well, I think we ought to take, we can take action on it, however, however is appropriate to note that. The other one with the, the other one we talked about was a bottle return, but that's kinda disappeared.
Okay, all right.
Okay? I can go through that a little bit, but that is not gonna, that's not gonna appear.
Do we, do we, do we get new submissions on Mr. McDonald's? Plans?
Not yet, I, we haven't, I haven't seen it. Phil, we haven't got, right?
You know a new drawing or you don't have a McDonald's application?
I don't think so.
Yeah, here we go. Well, I think he's supposed to bring in Forrest, either, you got maps now, or she got the maps? Did you do your survey, is that, what is it?
Filter.
That's it? Pardon, Vincent's got it? That, right there. All right. We all set? Okay, last month, last month when these folks were here, we got into a discussion about uh, what was uh, what was business zone, what wasn't business zone? And I've got to, I gotta make a disclaimer here. And uh, Forrest brought this to our attention, he is absolutely right. That uh, if you look, and you can just from here, I don't know what, if you can pick it out, Phil's pointing to it. But if you look at the, you look at that map, the zoning map up there, there is a, we normally say that the business zone in in along Bridgeport, which part of it is, and Lakeport, is three hundred feet deep from the road and we usually say the road right away. But if you look at the Bridgeport one up there, there's a bubble in that. And that actually includes both properties for, to the point, both properties of Mr. Serio at this point. So, the the property, the property in question where the motorsports wants to go with the buildings that are butts thirty-one, that's a, that's one, that's definitely in. And then the one outlined in blue also is in. So, part of that discussion that we had was incorrect. Okay? It, because it's it's all in and actually, that's business that could be accessed as a business from Kirkville Bridgeport Road. Okay? Having said that, our discussion about the driveway, et cetera, what are you gonna end up, what are you gonna end up doing? I'm actually, I mean, we like what, we like what we talked about.
Right.
I think that makes makes sense.
Yep.
Rather than coming down and, you know, you're still, your neighbor's still gonna have access as he needs it or you wanna let him have it, that kinda thing.
As long as he can, you know, he gets his car in and out of there, I'd love to see him do that, if possible.
That, that's up to you, that's 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 your prerogative.
He's a good neighbor, I have no issues, so that's fine.
Okay. All right, and we have a uh, gotta, we should have a GML here somewhere. Did you see one of those, John?
Yep. Return for local determination.
Okay, we need to, we need to do a seeker.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay, you're the lead agency for this unlisted action. The following questions concerning this proposal are, will the proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use plan or zoning regulation?
No.
Will the proposed act result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of land, answer probably yes, but is it small? Hopefully, right? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the community?
Yep.
Yep. And not applicable on um CEA. Will proposed acts result in adverse changes in level of traffic or affect the infrastructure, mass transit by in here or walkways?
No.
Will the proposed action increase the use of energy fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action affect existing public or private water, public or private wastewater?
No.
For both, right, and it's got sewer and water, right?
Yes.
Uh, will the proposed action impair the character uh or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, aesthetic resource?
No.
Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources?
Yep.
Proposed action increase potential erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or health?
No.
All right, I'm gonna check the box for a negative declaration to when we get to, if we get to the point for a resolution, I would bake that into your resolution.
Okay, we'll do it. All right, I, folks, if you got, what have you, you got maps, you can see, you gotta see, you gotta see what you wanna see. Okay. I think, I think that we're gonna, we're gonna put the roadway, we're gonna put the roadway right along the southern boundary, southern boundary of the uh, those adjacent properties. Vincent? Right? Okay, can you, when we get done here, can you have Forrest sketch, sketch that in and label that on this, on this map?
Yes.
Okay? And then you can show, you can show a, you're uh, in here, a staging, a staging or parking area for these properties here. I think we need this on the map because if there's ever a question down the road, this, your businesses, this business up in here is accessible from Kirkville Bridgeport Road, you have a driveway, you have parking, it it isn't like you need Route thirty-one.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
All right? Is there any other things you want here, folks? All right, let's go back to, let's go back, you write anything down here, John, on this one?
Well, from last
Hours of operation, I think we've got all
Let's see what I had here. You know, no, I, oh yeah, I have proposed hours, we're gonna be Monday through Saturday, ten AM to seven PM.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Right?
I'm sorry, seven AM to?
Ten AM to seven PM. That's uh, Monday through Saturday. I have uh,
Yep. Perfect, yep.
Uh, we asked
Well, make sure we put this in the resolution.
We asked about existing lighting or if any newer proposed lighting was gonna be used, I don't know if we ended up um getting a final of
The lighting's already in.
So you utilize existing lighting? The other one was, let's see, we discussed the access point.
That's right. Well, I think we're cleaning it though, we'll make a, we'll make a
Okay, we got the drawing you asked for. Oh, we, we had said no. So, he's gonna put on there the the um staging area for active work orders or whatever that we're gonna say.
Yeah, you can label, have that labeled on the map there, that area that's gonna be your parking there. Okay, Longs Forrest is taking notes, the flood plain, he's got a, he's got a hundred year flood there in the back. I'm not sure whether he's got any floodway. Okay, that ought to be on it. Then Vincent, what you got, what you're gonna end up with is the map, when you got that driveway, you got that all labeled, now you've got that as a clean, you've got that as a clean commercial lot, actually. You haven't gotta worry about driveways conflicting with one and the other, you can use one and the same, but it's it's a lot cleaner. And then you understand what you can build or can't build in the, in the flood, I'm not sure, do you know offhand the floodway? Long to Creek, Long to Creek there might be, but I, those are pretty good banks in there, I almost doubt it. Pardon?
There may be none.
Yeah, I I did check when I purchased the property.
Might be floodway though, or floodway.
There wasn't any uh
Hundred year flood? There's no floodway, but is there a hundred year flood?
Yes.
Hundred year, yeah, okay. Okay, but that ought to be on here. It's just, it's the only thing it's gonna touch is the back of that, of your, of your parallel parcel with thirty-one. So you're gonna label where Chris is gonna put his, store his incoming and outgoing, outgoing work, okay? And a little park, in parking area there. You're gonna put in the driveway, do the, do if whatever's, whatever's applicable here as far as the hundred year flood. Is there anything else?
Yeah, there's a couple from last time, you just gotta see if this is holding up still, so. It's a retail power sports and sales service business, including four wheelers and snowmobiles, et cetera. This will not be a passenger vehicle sales facility, right?
Correct.
Okay, I'll make sure that gets in there, condition approval will be that there will be no sales of vehicles of any kind, it's vehicles. Uh, there was one other thing, let's see. One thing we talked about is adding a condition that the site shall not be accessed by way of Route thirty-one, but should, shall we use Kirkville Bridgeport Road, do you want that in the resolution or no? So people
I'm still, I'm still a little bit lost, what is that pathway alongside, I, I mean, that's just there, right?
Why don't we just go with Kirkville Road and
Go with the Kirkville Road one?
Yeah.
All right.
So access will be from Kirkville.
He's gonna put a sign, are you, where are you gonna put a sign, on the Kirkville Road, right?
It'll be on Kirkville, I already checked into it, they said go ahead.
He's like, keep it out of the, keep it out of the highway right away, you're
And mention that, there'll be a, there'll be a, what's, what do you got for a sign?
But not, nothing right yet, but
Yeah, but what, what you, what do you have in mind?
Probably two poles and, you know, just a basic sign.
Monument, monument sign.
Yeah.
It's gonna be lighted already?
Uplighted, downlighted, no lighted.
Yeah, uh, I don't know yet for sure if it's gonna be lighted, there's enough light out there already on the road.
Okay. Well, you're not gonna be working tonight anyway.
No.
At least, at least you don't hope you are.
No.
That's right, okay.
Okay, I think we've covered all those conditions.
John, did you want a letter from Mr. Serial?
Oh, no outside storage, I'm sorry, what?
Did you want a letter from Mr. Serial?
Oh yeah, did we get that? Did you sign off on this, remember we talked about making sure that you, you
Yeah, but he's here.
I know you said you're here, so that's
And he's here.
No, and one other thing, I said, in the last month, we said no other outside storage, we had some complaints that there was stuff lying around in the yards and we had some complaints that there was stuff lying around in the yards, and other than his work order, um, um...
Projects.
That he has, that would maybe maintain as a...
Basically, no, you know, don't leave a, don't leave tranny or something laying out in the, you know, wheels, stuff like that, tires.
So that's what I've got. That's it.
Okay, somebody want to make that motion inclusive with the, with seeker?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, secondary, any discussion now? Alright, what we'll do, what we'll do, we'll, we'll, we'll respect your honor here, Vincent, and you'll get this map updated and get back to us, but we're going to give you approval tonight, so he can get going.
Did you vote?
Yes.
We're getting there.
First and second and a vote?
No.
I, I made the motion.
Made the motion, we didn't vote, all those in favor?
That's what I want to hear.
Aye? Both? Okay, you're in business. You're getting a notice of action, stays with your property, in other words, if down the road, whatever, you guys change your relationship in some major form, if something is quite fitting to this, you can operate under that. Okay? Forrest, you good?
Good.
Okay.
Appurables come out of his ears.
Yeah, he's three for three, we'll have to change, we'll have to change that somewhere.
He, he's been here a few times.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Can we have, can we have, can we have, um, what's this name? Justin Hathaway. He's here, I don't know. Sherry, where's, where's, Sherry disappeared?
No, Sherry.
No, Sherry.